Six forty-five, I would like to call the September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting to order. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is a recognition for Walpole High School.
Okay, so we'd like to congratulate Walpole High School for once again receiving the national banner of recognition for the Special Olympics in North America. They've successfully achieved national standards and excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. Am I stealing your thunder? So the athletes, and we have families here, our coaches and volunteers, everybody, teaching staff and administrations at Walpole High School, they really played key roles in creating a social climate where everyone feels included and respected for who they are. And the Special Olympics of Massachusetts indicated that they're honored, that Walpole High School is such a strong and fully inclusive school, and they're recognized for a second time for their hard work and dedication demonstrated daily, and that Walpole High School continues to grow and strengthen this program. I believe Walpole High School is only one of twenty-two schools in Massachusetts among the two hundred and five schools nationwide to actually achieve this status for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. So we would like to congratulate them and feel free to, you know, come up and have anything to say. So nice job, nice job.
Hello, everyone. Participating in Unified Sports is the best. Everyone is included. No one is excluded. You get to hang out with your friends and you can meet new people. Unified Sports is not about winning, it's about having fun. Unified Sports is going to be fun this year.
Hello, everyone. Unified Sports are really fun to participate in, and everyone is welcome to join. We learn sportsmanship and learn from each other. The coaches are awesome and encourage us to do our best. I love being a part of Unified Sports.
Hi, so I'm really glad that I do Unified Sports because it's allowed me to make so many awesome friends and coaches, and I've learned a lot about the importance of inclusion, friendship, and supporting each other.
Thank you so much, student athletes. Could you all tell us your names? That was the only thing missing from your wonderful speeches. You didn't even have to go to the mic if you don't want to.
Oh, I'm Colleen Finn.
Colleen.
I'm Rory Higginson.
Rory.
I'm Alexander Marr.
Alexander, nice to meet you all. I'll invite the staff or families who want to come up if you would like to in just a moment, but before I do that, does anybody have any questions or comments for the student athletes? Mrs. Rogers?
I just want to say congratulations. That's so awesome and exciting. Would you mind sharing, if you don't mind, like what you participated in, what sports you did or activities?
Yeah, um, let me see, Unified Basketball and then Unified Track.
Nice.
Thanks, and they're very fun.
I love it.
Yes.
From here.
No, no, you can speak from here if you want, or you can go to the microphone. Okay, come here. Tell them what sports you participated in.
I participated in Unified Basketball, Unified Track.
Wonderful. And Colleen?
I do Unified Track, and I'm hoping to do Unified Basketball this year.
Excellent. Mrs. Gallivan, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say, one of our favorite parts of school committee meetings is when we get to see kids come to our meetings. So first of all, thank you for coming tonight, and you guys make us really proud. You're doing some really good things. Maybe it was a little bit scary to sign up at first, but when you show other kids how much fun it is, that will help them too. So thanks for coming. You were on TV tonight, so you can wa-watch, you can watch the recording during the week. It stays there for a little while, but you did a beautiful job. You really did, so thank you.
Alexander, this is your second time, I think, presenting to us, and so I have a request for when you come back for a third time. When you come back, can you please bring the coffee cart with you?
Yeah.
So we can, so we can order some treats?
You, you have to get your orders in.
Okay, all right. Well, Ms. Notabert will help us sort that out, I'm sure. Dr. Goff, what did you want to say?
No, I just want to thank you all and the families for supporting this, and also the staff, because none of this would be possible, you know, without your commitment. I know the work that is involved and the time, and I know that you just, you love doing this, and I know it's just, it's three of you, and there's so many more people that come to help out, especially like when I look at that Unified Track, it's amazing, the people that come out and the volunteers, and just seeing the other schools as well come out and join us in these events. So thank you, it's greatly appreciated.
Any of the staff want to say anything, or any of the families?
We just want to thank everybody that holds community, Dr. Goff, Mr. Imbush, he's not here tonight, Ron Dowd, the athletic director, Mr. Quealy, everybody here who just, you know, really does support all of our teams, and we come to them and we say, can we do this, or what do you think about this, and everybody always makes it work. And I know that that takes a community to do that. Seeing the kids happy and really feel included in something that they love doing is just really special. I tell people, just come out and watch for five minutes, and there's no way you can walk away and not want to be somehow involved in it. Seeing these friendships just transcend, you know, beyond the court and beyond the field. I see the kids sitting together at lunch, I see them checking in with one another during snack time, and it just really is so special. So we just thank the community for everybody's help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Great job.
Nice job, everybody. Oh, yes, would you all like to come up and take a picture standing in front here?
Parents can take a picture of you.
You can stand right in front of the dais up here. Yeah, right in center. Perfect, perfect. Thank you all. And you are welcome to stay for the rest of our compelling meeting, but if you have other places to be, please feel free. Thank you for being here. Our next item of business tonight is the Walpole High School Student Report.
Good ea, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Beastie.
Hi, I'm James Pirdy. I'm shadowing tonight for Victoria.
We're both sophomores at the high school, and this is my first time representing WHS. With school back in session for around a month now, and the weather beginning to get colder, freshmen are starting to settle in nicely, and many of them have joined various clubs and sports. Class of two thousand and twenty-seven Stuco representatives were around, announced yesterday, and have their first meeting next week. Back-to-school night was a success. Many parents of students in all grades got to become more familiar with school grounds and staffs. Classes are finally starting to pick up the pace, with many of them planning to have their first quizzes and tests of the year within the next week. Many students attended yesterday's college fair in the gym and were offered information and resources about eleven local colleges in New England, such as Fairfield University, University of Massachusetts Amherst, and College of Charleston. Ball sports are also off to a great start, with girls volleyball and field hockey having an undefeated season so far. The football home opener was a great night, and Walpole beat one of their longtime rivals, Wellesley. They play at Needham High School tomorrow night. Many clubs are also in the works of planning their first fundraisers and events of the year. Community Service Club is doing a schoolyard cleanup and is working with senior citizens to help them prepare for winter months by cleaning their yards. UNICEF is working on a trunk-or-treat fundraiser, and Student Council is planning a cornhole tournament to benefit the Jimmy Fund, and a pajama day to benefit Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and the Riley Rocks Memorial Foundation. I think everyone here would agree with me when I say, so far, so good. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Victoria. That was a wonderful inaugural report, and on behalf of the committee, we'd like to welcome you, and we're excited to work with you for hopefully the next three years, and you too, James. Any questions for Victoria or James? All right, thank you very much. And you should know too that you are always more than welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, and you are also more than welcome to go and attend to your other business that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, next item of new business is an opening of schools report from the Special Education Department.
Yes, we have Dr. John Quealy, the Director of Pupil Services, who will provide a Special Education Program Report.
Good evening. Before I start, I just want to echo my congratulations to the student athletes and the staff. It is an unbelievable program. I had the pleasure of going down and watching some of the track and field in the spring, and I watched a little bit of the basketball at the middle school level. It's, it is an amazing program, so absolute congratulations to all the folks that are involved, and there are a lot of folks who are involved. So I could not start without, without expressing that tonight, so. So I have a couple of things for you. I'm gonna give you some of the things that I normally give you at the start of the year in terms of statistics and updates and that nature, and then I have a couple of themes that I'll talk about that we're going through Special Ed for the, for the year. So as far as statistics and running the numbers today, we have six hundred and fifty-five active IEPs in the district. That is seventeen percent of the total population, and I think I was here just about at the exact same time last year, and we were at seventeen percent at that point also. And I think last year I talked about that being up a little bit from previous years where we start the year at about thirteen or fourteen percent when I started, and so now two years in a row, we're at seventeen percent to start the year. So we have thirty-eight tuition-based out-of-district students. That's been hovering around the forty mark, sort of a little bit up, a little bit down over the last couple of years. I'm proud to say we have no vacant positions in terms of our MSN and therapist staff. I don't believe all of our neighbors can make the same claim, so I'm happy to say that. We do have three paraprofessional openings, and so we're working on filling those. I would also say, I'm not sure all of our neighbors can make that claim also. I have heard stories in other districts of double-digit vacancies in the ESP area, so, so I give credit to the principals who, in their interview process, it seems like they're really selling Walpole on candidates as a place to be, so I do credit them. So we're in reasonably good shape there compared to some other districts. So the first, I'll pivot here, the first of the themes that I'm gonna talk about is the new IEP template. So you may know that for a number of years, DESI has been working to create a new IEP template for the state to use. They have finalized a product, and we're gonna start to roll it out. The mandate to use this form is fall of next year, but we do have it in our hands now, and we're starting to, to work with it. Let's see. So we're gonna attack this from three different angles. The first, obviously, is getting to know what's on the form, how is it different than the current form, and how is it gonna change IEP meetings, and what's gonna be discussed, and what's gonna be looked at in IEP meetings. And in doing this, this will start really next month formally, where we're sending a number of staff to a DESI training, statewide training. They're going to take information from DESI. We'll meet, the team chairs and I will meet, and we'll create a plan to roll out training to the rest of the district. So that's really the first place that we're gonna start. DESI is providing monthly Q and A meetings for statewide for directors, and so I'm sitting in on those on a monthly basis to hear and really discuss with DESI how this is gonna roll out here over the next academic year. Secondly, there's a logistics element to this. We're working with our IT partner, Aspen. So this is a situation where this won't, we won't flip a switch or click a link, and everything's gonna migrate from one form to the other. It's gonna be a gradual process, probably student-by-student process to migrate, move away from the old form into the new form. So we're gonna need to partner with Aspen to make sure that happens as smoothly as it, as it can. And then finally, there's communication to the stakeholders, most importantly, parents. And we're talking with DESI right now about the content of that messaging, how that messaging's gonna be delivered, and I hope to get something out to parents very soon, as soon as I sort of hear from DESI the finalized versions of how they think the messaging should go. Our hope, while the mandate is fall of next year, our hope is to begin using this new IEP in a very limited basis in the spring. If everything goes well, that, that is our goal. So that's one theme. The second theme is tiered focus monitoring. You may know it better as CPR, Coordinated Program Review. So you may know every six years, the district is formally reviewed by DESI, and Walpole is up this year. This process really started last year, where DESI solicits information from the district, various documents, various data that I send to them. They've been looking through that, processing it, and later this year, there is an onsite visit. That's gonna take place in January. It lasts somewhere between one and two days. This used to be a full three-day process, so they have trimmed it down a bit, which is, which is good and less intrusive to the district. But it will mean some, some measure of planning, so the first half of the year, we'll be doing a lot of planning in preparation for DESI's visit. And then the third theme that I'll touch on briefly, and I think this is an overarching theme for the district, is how do we bring two middle school Special Ed staffs together and merge them into a new building? What, you know, migrating the physical files, caseload assignments, how to really run a building, Special Ed staff meetings, 504 process, things like that. How are we gonna take those things operating in two buildings and merge them into one? So among the other things going on, that'll constantly be in the backdrop, both in Special Ed and I know at a district level as well. So, so those are the three things that are gonna, I think, dominate a busy year in Special Ed, so I can certainly answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, Dr. Quealy. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Buckley?
Three months, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Quealy, for the report. It's heartening to know that we're a place folks, professionals want to work, and that we have, we're in a better position than some of our neighbors, which is always, I think, good. I'm interested in maybe hearing more as the year goes on about that second point you talked about, the new IEP and the communication around it. I know that unfortunately, just by the nature of these documents that the state makes us utilize, sometimes they can be on the road towards an adversarial nature as we, we, we sort of, I've become embroiled in dialogues with families, but I think as, the more we can do through this body, through your office as well, through the wider parent community, I know you do a lot of good work with the CPAC as well, just continuing to, not only with this change, but just in a general way, help folks understand the process, because I feel, not just myself, but I was on an IP here in the district years ago, but a number of my colleagues and I have kind of continually heard from folks, especially folks new to the district, especially folks with their first child in our care, who are like, oh my God, this is such a seemingly insurmountable thing. And I think the more resources we can give you and your staff to help you help, you know, the parents and guardians in our district navigate that. I know you do a good job, but I think it's just something that perhaps myself and some of my other colleagues would really like us to help you focus on and give you the tools to do so, because I think, especially now that we're changing a document that people, just perhaps some of them just starting to get familiar with, I think that's a really important thing to not lose sight of over the, and I know your staff is gonna do a good job with that, but we want to support you in that as well, and maybe continue through Special Ed Subcommittee having those type of dialogues as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Welcome the help. I think CPAC will be an important partner.
Excellent.
I think DESI recognizes that this may be difficult for parents, and I know they're, they're creating documents for parents as the target of the document to read and get to know the new IEP. So it'll be, it'll be a challenging year. I think there'll be a lot of learning, but I am really hopeful that we can start using it in the second half of this year and get a head start on it.
Excellent, thank you.
Mrs. Rogers?
Just sort of piggybacking on that, so how different is the document?
There are a lot of elements that are similar. I think the one thing that we've looked at that is different, that we're looking at ways to address, there are really two different forms of it. There's a form for three-year-olds up to thirteen, and then there's a form for fourteen-plus. So that by itself will be new. So there's really two versions of this new document. One of the things that DESI is really moving forward with and encouraging districts to get involved with, and which I think is good, is student input at every age. So where we're gonna be looking at is how do we solicit the student's input and voice into the IEP, you know, whether they're three, three years old or twenty years old, what's the student's vision and input? And those are some things that we're gonna look to be creative to get, you know. We want to know what, what our three-year-olds want, and how we solicit that information is gonna look a little different than, you know, our fourteen-year-olds or fifteen-year-olds. So that, that is one major element that I think is gonna be different.
And are there any changes made in, like, accessibility for parents? I know, like you were saying, the document is so daunting. Like, was anything done, do you think, in your opinion, to make it more accessible, or is it just gonna be, continue to be a learning process for everyone?
I think it'll certainly be a learning process. I think what we found here in our district, which has been very helpful, we've moved from a situation where we're trying to eliminate as much paper as we can, and we're moving to a signature method that's electronic. And we've found that parents have responded to that really well. We're getting IEPs back a lot quicker. We're getting consents to evaluate back a lot quicker. So the, the electronic delivery of documents, as far as accessibility for parents, I think we saw last year as a major, major improvement.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? It may be a little bit early for this point, but since you're talking about middle school consolidation, and we know that the middle school special education experience really starts in the spring of fifth grade, as those transition meetings are occurring, and so I'm wondering if there's anything in particular that those families should know about what that will look like this year, perhaps especially if they've had older children and already gone through that process. I imagine it's gonna be a little bit different.
A little bit different, but I think we still want to make a connection between middle school staff, particularly Special Ed staff, and elementary fifth-grade staff. And we've always done that, and I think we want to continue doing that. How that looks might be a little bit different, but that basic idea of we want to connect the two buildings in the springtime for all the fifth graders moving up, that will still be in place. How it looks, logistically, might be a little different, but that, that will stay the same, I would anticipate.
Great.
I would expect.
Well, thank you very much for that update.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. And our next update on the opening of school comes from our Director of Digital Learning.
Yes, Mr. Tom Reeve, Director of Digital Learning, is up next for opening the school report.
If you're crossing your fingers, what hope do the rest of us have?
Well, exactly, step one, is it on?
I'll just start, and I'll have faith that the TV will get caught up as we go along. We're almost there. Hi, I'm Tom Reeve. I'm the Director of Digital Learning and Technology here at Walpole.
It's on the back one.
It's connecting, it's right in the back, too.
No, no, I'm fine. I wear a couple of different hats in the district, and I've come before you before to talk about the digital learning side of what we do at Walpole. Today, my focus is a little bit more about the IT side of our program, and some of the updates and some of the changes that have happened over the past year or so. Maybe I'll do the hard copy after that.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, one of our first changes was the introduction of our new app.
Yeah.
Over the summer, we partnered with a company called Aptogy to launch our Walpole Public Schools app to bring the most important communications to the family's fingertips. The app focuses on current events, school calendars, newsletters, lunch menus, the types of information that people most need most often, right there in the app. It gives us the ability to push notifications out to the app, so if we have a new newsletter, new information, the phone goes bing, and people can find out about the news that we need. When you download the app, you have the ability to choose which schools are applicable to you, so if you have a student at Boydin and one at Byrd, you can just sign up for those schools and get the news that's related in that way. On the back end of the system, we also have the ability to sync it to our school information system, so we can push out important alerts to our families for things that are maybe not casual, like a newsletter, but important, and, you know, weather delays or late buses and those kinds of things, and we can send alerts out not only by email like we used to do, but also by text message. So really, the, one of the main advantages to our new system, besides the fact that it looks nice, is the fact that we can send information to people's smartphones by text and through the app, which is really where people are. Relying on email is really no longer, it's really not the way we communicate much anymore. Another huge benefit of the app is that it will automatically translate it to people's language of choice. So that really broadens our ability to make sure that we're communicating with all of our families in town. If you haven't yet, download the app, you go onto the App Store and search for Walpole Public Schools, and it'll ask you which schools to get and which notifications. and it'll ask you which schools to get and which notifications. One of the really nice things about this app is that it is also tied into the website. The app and the website are actually a package, and it's designed as an app-first package in that most people will go to their phone and find the information on the app that is the most important. And then if they need to dig in deeper for some of our more static content, they can go to the app. Those two systems are tied together. But the introduction of the app, Ross, a new website with the nice new branding, streamlined menus, and just kind of a new look to what we're doing. A part of the website that we actually launched a little bit early was our online safety hub. Our content filter company, LineWise, partners with us to deliver to our families the online safety hub, which is essentially a resource for families and parents about digital wellness. It is hard for us all to keep track of new and changing technology. It's especially hard when our kids are in front of us, changing quicker than we are. And it's hard for families to be able to keep up. And our kids come home and they say, we've got, I've heard about this great new game, this new social media, this fun new app, and we don't know anything about these new platforms. The online safety hub, which we find right on our website, has app reviews for parents, age recommendations, ways you can turn on or off different settings to help better protect your students' privacy. It has suggestions for how to set up parental controls on your home Wi-Fi, how to set up, like, tech usage agreement plans that you and your kids can sign. A lot of really great resources for, again, what we're calling digital wellness. Not just a matter of how to use tech, but how to make it a part of your balanced life. It's a really great resource. All of these things are incorporating our new branding. Within the past year, we've put together a site of branding style guidelines. If you work for a company that has strict style guidelines, this is very amateur in comparison. But at least it is a start for us to try to consolidate our logos, our colors, our fonts, and get those materials where our staff can use them to try to develop some consistency in our online and our paper-based materials. Switching over to the financial side, for the past couple of years and for the next several years, I'm sure, I've been working with Mike Frischa and collaborating with the town to try to develop a plan for the replenishment of dark technology. We have a lot of technology that supports 4,500 staff, students. And there are a lot of computers, internet, software, printers, phones, all of that stuff. And as we know, technology ages very quickly. And in general, it ages much faster than our capital cycle, for example, can keep up. And the need for us to have a plan for how we're going to keep replacing this technology that ages out in five years, eight years, or 10 years, and all of those pieces, is really important. So I've been working with Mike to try to get past the point where he says, oh, no, how much money do you need this year? Because we don't want, surprises aren't fun for anybody, especially when we talk about the budget process. So we have been working in a couple of ways. One, to come up with a plan, and second, to look at how we can shift some of the funding into our operating budget. The capital budget is designed for big, grandiose, exciting projects that the town wants to take on, asking for the same things every single year in a capital project. But not really what the capital project is for, is not what the town wants to spend capital money on. And really trying to shift our technology from a fun-to-have, every-so-of-in-capital project to a necessity for our schools, we need to be replacing some every year. It's a shift in our model, and we've been working on trying to figure out how to start shifting that money. My mantra, and it says on the bottom right there, regular predictable and responsible spending. Nobody wants surprises when it comes to this kind of purchasing. So as an example, some of the things we've been able to move over from capital over to operating, just before I came on, we were finishing up the process of doing our Wi-Fi access points, the little things in the ceiling that give us our Wi-Fi. We were able to move all of those into a regular recurring cycle in our operating budget. We had to do that because if we wanted the E-rate reimbursement, it had to be part of operating budget, that's part of the regulations. But it was a great model that we decided to start using for other things. With this fiscal year, we've been able to move some of our network infrastructure, our servers, our switches and those things, and our classroom projectors. We've allocated some money in the technology budget to be able to replace a percentage of those every year. In very simple terms, if my projectors are supposed to last 10 years, rather than waiting 10 years and replacing all of them, we want to try to replace 10% of them every year. And then we'll have a regular replenishment cycle, a little bit at a time. Over the next couple of years, we want to try to move the student Chromebooks and the staff and teacher devices over as well. Student Chromebooks, as you're aware, is a very big ask every year. We're a one-to-one district. We have Chromebooks for all grades K through 12. That's a lot of Chromebooks that are aging out every year. So we are working to, not all at once, but over the next couple, few, several years to start moving some of that ask over into our operating budget and figure out ways that we can make that a regular educational expense, not a special project expense. Speaking of the Chromebooks, this is our first year, funding sources aside, this is our first year of our replenishment plan, meaning a regular repeating plan of replacing Chromebooks that we can follow for the next several years. The bottom right of that, the four-year cycle for the high school, freshmen will get new Chromebooks in grade nine. We'll keep those Chromebooks to grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, grade 12. When they graduate, they turn them in, and we can decommission those Chromebooks. Similarly, in the elementary schools, new Chromebooks to grade two. Keep them for four years. When they leave for the middle school, we decommission those Chromebooks. The middle school ones, grades six, seven, and eight, that's only three years of use. So we take those when they leave the middle school, cycle those down to the kindergarten and first, where they get used a little bit more gently, not quite as the heavy use in digital learning at those grades. Some, but not to the extent of the upper grades, and we get five years of use out of them. This is the first year where we've been able to actually establish our second grade, our sixth grade, our ninth grade, and now we've got our plan. We're in sync to be able to replace these as needed over the next several years. Switching gears a little bit, we've had some enhancements for our cybersecurity. This past, this past spring and heading into the fall, we're participating in cybersecurity awareness training for all of our staff. We have several hardware and software systems in place to try and prevent attacks, make sure we don't get hit by anything that's gonna hurt us, right? But most people and most businesses will say the weakest point in most of that cybersecurity is staff awareness of attacks, getting those scam emails that come in that ask for passwords or those kinds of things. And that kind of training is really important. We were lucky enough to get a grant from the Executive Office of Technology, Services, and Security from the state, a grant for all of this training. So there have been four training sessions, two of them in the past spring, two coming up in the fall, where we're training our staff on recognizing phishing, recognizing invoice scams, those kinds of things to make sure we keep our systems safe. Another big step that we've taken recently was to add two-factor authentication into our sign-in systems. You know, when you try to log into something and then it has to text you a code to make sure it's really you, adding that in. And really trying to enhance not just our physical security, but also our understanding and our learning about how that security works as well. So coming up for the future, we've got a couple of projects. Obviously, Walpole Middle School, the tech purchasing arrangement, deployment of that is a big, exciting, and mildly terrifying project. We have great help from our ed tech consultants with the building project, but that obviously is a big project we're gonna be working on the next year. Continuing to look at how we can budget for replenishment, having regular plans in place for our technology. We want to add more tools for family engagement and translation. That Aptig thing where we could translate and send messages to phones and those, that's great for our district and school-level, basically one-way communication. There are tools out there that allow teachers to be able to do that with the parents in their classes. We're exploring those kinds of technologies to see which ones might be appropriate and which ones might be affordable and those kinds of things. But really trying to expand our family engagement and communication is a fairly big priority for us. We want to try to standardize our tech deployment for purposes of better support and for better purchasing, to try to make sure we've got the same types of technology all through our buildings and through our staff. And then where, as a little extra thing, we're starting to explore the use of touch display panels like this one that I thought was hooked up, but isn't actually hooked up to what we're doing. But this type of technology in classrooms can be really powerful when used the right way. But they're also very different, and there are pros and cons that we're starting to explore some of that. We don't need to go into that tonight because no one wants to hear it, but if you're especially excited about touch panels, I'll sit with you over a coffee. So that's my quick tech update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Reeve or comments?
I just wanted to say I think this app is fantastic. I can't tell you how many times I've been standing at the bus, not knowing where my kid was, worried about getting somewhere, and now it pops up on your app and you're like, oh, all right. Should be here any second. It's just the way people get news. No one's checking email. So I agree with you. It's just such a fantastic enhancement, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Galvin?
I just love your enthusiasm, your long-term planning. It's really important stuff. I don't want to be like the wet noodle. But I think when it comes to budgeting, we're gonna have to, and I'm sure you and Mike have had this conversation already, that we have to be realistic about, you know, if doing everything that you'd like to do in the technology plan means we have to do less in some other areas, we're gonna have to be willing to look at, you know, the compromise and the give and take. So as I know Mike pretty well, I'm sure you probably have some options if we can't stick to the strict replacement cycle because, you know, it's just a reality.
Right. In general, I try to say that it's good to have a plan because then you can adjust the plan when necessary.
No, and it's great. And I think that, you know, being able to articulate it to us makes it easier for us to help sell it. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I'll just add, you know, I also appreciate the thoughtfulness of your approach to your role. And I think, I just want to highlight again the online safety hub for families because I think it bears repeating. You know, the pandemic really sped up the rate at which our kids were adopting technology and sped up the rate at which families had to then prepare themselves for that and educate themselves. And I think it's really great that, you know, there were some, I think, people who felt at the beginning of the pandemic that the technology was being pushed on their kids earlier than they would have liked, and there was nothing really to be done about that. And this is where we are now with one-to-one. But I appreciate that we're also providing resources and support for families to navigate that. And I also very much appreciate how we're trying to facilitate two-way communication with all of our families, regardless of what language they speak. That, I think, is just a recognition of where our community is now, and I appreciate that, too. So, thank you very much.
Good to see you. All right. And last, but certainly not least, when it comes to opening of school reports, school nutrition.
Yes, Maria Hall, Director of School Nutrition, will provide you with the school nutrition update. Welcome, Maria.
So I, this is really, looks like a lot, but I just wanted you to not have to write down everything, so I put it together on a sheet of paper. So thank you for having me tonight and the opportunity to update you on where we're at. So we're very excited and worked very hard with legislation to, Massachusetts actually became the eighth state to make free school meals for all. And it's not just for this year. Like, we had hoped that at least one more year, but it's for indefinite until, you know, maybe some administration changes or things like that happen. So it's really exciting. And it's free meals, breakfast and lunch, which is nice, so. And with that, we basically have running about 60% to 70% participation. It's early in the school year, and this is what I find for the first few weeks. And even though now I'm a grandparent of four, when I remember when my kids, I'd be all excited when the first few weeks of school and making lunches, doing everything. And then by the, you know, the fifth week, I'm like, just get it at school, you know? I think this is a good number for the beginning of the school year. But the parent knowing, every parent knowing that their child could get free breakfast and lunch in school is great opportunity for them to take advantage of. And to know that even with allegiance, we're aware of those through working closely with the nurses, IT, Aspen, those things to make sure our information systems have that information available. So we've worked really hard to ensure that children with special dietary needs are met. So we're currently doing approximately 3,800 meals a day. Breakfast, there's an opportunity at the middle schools for breakfast. Participation increase has a little to do with some disruption with Byrd Middle School, right? So we were doing second chance breakfast in both schools, which gave the opportunity, when the kids came through the door, to get meals for breakfast, and then another chance after the bell rang. And that, there's a little hiccup with that one right now, but we're working on it. So we'll see those numbers go up for the breakfast participation. The elementary schools were able to do it in the classroom. I appreciate all the work that principals and teachers have done to help that happen. And obviously, my staff who drug it up to, we're feeding in the classroom, so the staff is bringing those meals up to each of the classrooms and dropping them. So that's exciting and a lot of work for them, but I appreciate them always. So just a little bit about the reimbursement and how that works. So when it's not a free meal year, which it is now, I know, but our kids that are free, the federal government pays the full price for the meal, which in this year's rate is $4.30. So I'm gonna make a meal that's gonna feed a child for lunch, $4.30. If a child is qualified as reduced, then I have, they'll give me, the federal government will give me $3.85. And the difference between that and the $4.30 is the amount that the parent would pay, say. And then a paid kid, the state would pay 45, I mean, the federal government would pay 45 cents, and then the difference would be what we'd have to get through collecting for our student through a pay, you know, through a parent. But now they're free. So that difference comes from the state. So it's super important that we make sure we have as many people apply for free and reduced meals that are eligible or feel they may be eligible because we want less money, we want the money to come from the federal government that's supposed to come from the federal government and not from our state budget. And it was $77 million last year, $177 million last year. That's what it costs the Commonwealth to pay for free meals. That number could come down if we were able to qualify more kids. And so I know Dr. Gar and I already spoke about really going after anyone that had, like, that is gonna, what they call, the eligibility's gonna lapse because they didn't reapply this year, and we've done some target with that already, and it's really paid off. And she's gonna do some work and send some emails out through her email list as well. So we're excited to capture that. And then, so that's important also for our SIMS data because the higher the percentages of free and reduced, the more money that comes into the community from the government as well. So all these tie in together, and a lot of times, we don't think about school, you know, the school nutrition department involved in this, but we really are the key to getting this information in, so. So with that said, there's, you may or may not have seen this, but the new federal regulation took CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Provision, which allows a community be free based on the fact that their percentage of free students eligible is above 40%. So you could, as a district, if we were close, or if we're like 45%, we, as a district, could decide we're gonna do a CEP as long as we fell within that guideline, and then you were good for three years, which is nice. What that means is no one has to fill out applications, which is nice. So it's a little less work there, a little tougher to get SIMS numbers, but still, it's an opportunity. We've never really had any of our schools fall close to 40, except our special ed schools, but they're so transient. One week, there's this may, one, it's a, we do service league, tech, and BIKO. We feed those children as well. Some of our students that are called out of district, they go to those schools, but some of them are not from our district. So we're feeding those children as part of our, under our collaboration, but under our number, say, with DESI. So the new thing that's going to take effect October 26, this literally just came out yesterday, is that schools that are 25% or less of free paid, the federal government has increased that to help address food insecurities. So with that said, some of our schools come close. As I wrote the numbers down, we have Byrd and Boyd in at 22%. As we go after these students and families, and when I say go after, like, try to get them, encourage them to do, fill out the application, we may see that number hit that mark, and then we could make a decision as a community to allow those schools to be community eligible. There's a little, there's a little bit of, you know, mathematics that go with that and how it gets paid and all, but it may help with, again, some SIMS numbers. So those numbers being how much money, again, comes into the community through federal numbers. So it's something that you'd have to decide as, you know, this group as well as administration. But right now, you see the numbers are, again, between 10% and 14%. Byrd and Boyd and are at 22. And the special ed schools is something to talk about, but literally, it came out to talk about, but literally, it came out yesterday. So, I wasn't sure that was going to happen. So I'll keep an eye on that. Let's see. Then, the other thing I wanted to let you all know about is through our program, through really working hard, and again, my staff, I could not do what I do without staff. And we've had some, so, so much commitment over the last few years from COVID. We're all tied, everyone's tied, right? COVID really did everybody in with all, they just keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Again, I applaud my staff and we're excited that meals are free. But through the, the program, we were able to bring in enough revenue to hit some of the capital equipment that we didn't need to ask you for, because we're allowed to use our funds to promote, to, to put monies into our programs. So we were able to purchase new serving lines for three of the elementary schools. I provided you some pictures in there, I'll tell you a little bit. And also the high school. And one of the neat things about the wells is you'll see on this particular picture, this is actually today's lunch at Elm Street. Not only is it nice, and you, I kid you not, this is, the elementary, wow, I love it! No kidding. I just, they really made me laugh, a lot of the kids. But the wells can go hot or cold, which allows us to give more versatility with our, our meals program. And, you know, with the Board of Health would love the, they love the idea of this versatility as well, instead of ice packs or cooling, you know, bringing things in and out. We have one of the units where you see the picture on the bottom left, that is a cold plate. It refrigerates or freezes. So you could put things out, like our fruits and veggies, instead of having trays with cold packs under them, putting it back in the fridge between. And it just allows for versatility there. And above that is a hot thing. So, we can turn on, turn that on and have bagels. So some kids want a bagel lunch, and we can make the, those, those things warm, so that if we're doing a, something that requires heat, that is a grab and go type thing, even for the elementary kids. So we're really excited about it. The high school, we did the same thing, and they have two more units that have already been purchased. And, let's see, they, they're, they're here, they're not here in our building yet, because I'm trying to work out all the little kinks and things going with electricity and plumbing and before I bring any more pieces in, because there's been a few hiccups, just making sure the things get actually hooked up the correct way, or something required more power than we anticipated. But they've been encumbered, so those are ready to go when I say we can go. And we're going to try to do on a half-day. Excited about that. We also were able to, you know, walk-in coolers, you know, the big ones. Those can range between $40,000 and $60,000. And we're able to do one at, Opus Road has a combination one, it's a fridge to a freezer. We were able to do that. Elm Street, Boyd in have two separate, we were able to do both of those. And the high school has a commodity freezer, which is, or our USDA food, where we get big, the big, the free food from the government. That one, we were able to replace on the same platform that we had. So, those are all covered through the program. And the Fisher freezer, we refurbished because that, that's why you didn't hear me say about Fisher's replacement of the, it's a unique school with some unique equipment needs. So that walk-in is literally cement. So we just had it redone inside. So it has all the, it, it has an upgrade to it. And that's what we can do in there. And our goal with the unit, I know those of you have been at Fisher, it has a big, like, like this, serving line that connects two ways. So we're going to replace the wells, so they do the same thing, and the sneeze guards, which are those nice glass things. They're just a little more custom for that. So, they're working on that. And the last, I think, exciting thing is the hydroponic towers. We were able to purchase four of those. So we have them at the high school, Boyd in, Elm and Fisher. And last year, we set up at Elm, we worked with the extended day students. And at Boyd in, extended day. And Boyd in had a little trouble because it kept getting unplugged and moved. So we had to find a better place for that. But Elm Street, I tried an experiment where we grew everything, but then I pulled stuff out and we planted it to see if it worked. And it worked. And Elm Street, it was unfortunate, we were going to do the lettuce party with the stuff from the garden outside. But there's a family of groundhogs who ate it all the day before it was going to be picked. So we ended up using some of the hydroponics lettuce for it. So, we still had the lettuce party, but it was interesting. And Susan Wick, a teacher at the high school, is using it in her science. She just got hers yesterday. And she's going to use it to show the effects of different nutrients on the growth. So it's pretty neat. So, that is, I open up to any questions you might have, but.
Thank you so much, Maria. Any questions or comments?
Again, I love the enthusiasm. Completely appreciate that, you know, the pandemic must, was very hard on the, on the food service.
Right.
Very hard. But, you know, you still have, I mean, I don't know all the skills that you just listed, but it sounds like you had plumbing skills and electrical skills, on top of your financial skills, on top of your groundhog skills. So, it's, it's fantastic because we're, we're lucky to have you, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I think that, that, you know, you make the job fun. It seems like people have stayed for a good long while. And, but you're doing some really hard work. And I just love the fact that there's no stigma attached to coming for, for breakfast or lunch, now that it's free for everybody. You know, I think that that's, that that is an important thing because, you know, kids are on the run and families are on the run. And you don't necessarily have the breakfast that you would like when you first get out in the morning. So, what you're doing is really, really important, I guess. And please convey our support, our thanks and support to your staff.
Well, absolutely.
But thank you for the energy. It's amazing.
I would say that's headline one. And headline two, if I understand the presentation, is everyone should fill out that lunch.
So it's so funny. I did write that on my email blast out and on our website. And so the qualification is, people did it. I mean, we're talking about people who have many, many dollars of income, did it for me still. And, you know, so it's really, it would be important if you feel you're close to qualifying to definitely. And there is on my webs, on our website, it does show you the qualification numbers. So, but it's based on how many are in the family. And what's important is how many live in the household. So if a grand, if a grandparent lives in the household, especially if they don't have income or a baby, they count as the number. And that's sometimes people miss. And when they come close, I always call and say, listen, did you forget somebody? Because, you know, hey, you're close.
Well, I think, you know, obviously, if, if breakfast and lunch is free for everybody no matter what, I can easily understand why a family would think they could skip that. But you raise important points about the fact that it determines whether or not we are receiving money that we should be getting from the federal government, as opposed to draining that from the state government. And also that it affects funding that we can get for lots of different things in districts that have really nothing to do with nutrition. But as you said, you're the gatekeeper of that information, for which we're very grateful. So yes, fill out the form, everyone. Everyone fill it out. Fill it out twice.
And we have an online app, so it's very easy, in all the languages. You just drop down and pick a language. So.
Excellent. Anybody else? Dr. Goff, oh, Mr. Buckley first.
Do you want to go first?
No, just, just quickly. I also just wanted to recognize Maria because, for the grants that she applies for. I mean, whenever there's a grant that comes out, she's, she's on it. And I'd probably say 99.9% that, that we get it. So thank, thank you for that.
Yeah, the, the high school walk-in, we got $20,000 towards that through grant and the rest through our own funds. So.
Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you very much, Maria. Again, I love your enthusiasm. I know Mrs. Rogers, Mrs. Gallivan and I were able to look at a few schools throughout Walk Through the other day. The high school looks great as well. And I think it just speaks to, I don't know, have you been with us 10 years now? Is it?
Twelve.
Twelve. I just, I remember sitting here.
Well, January, 2011, I started.
And it's just, it really, it's a great testament, because that average participation rate was lower, much lower when you started. The, the cost of this program was, was dragging. And I bring this up every year coming, because I think it's important, when we talk about, like, this district and how it works, every freezer we get through a grant or through free and reduced now, is something that's not in the capital plan fighting with a Chromebook. And so I think it really, not only do you, do you feed basically the whole town, it's worth of students now, between, I think, all you have left is Blessed Sacrament, and you, you and Mike will have the whole town cornered. But, but quite seriously, I think you give them the nutrition as well, but you're really an integral part of our system because all of these different funding needs are kind of, go together. And so we've, we've taken this through your leadership, something that was a budget burden to something that's now, especially through the help of the state paying for itself. And I think it's just so good. You're even, even with, I think maybe a lot of your colleagues would say, okay, it's free now, mission accomplished. But even within that, you're like, well, let's try to get the federal money instead of the state money. And so I just, I appreciate that level of professionalism and leadership. So we're really, we're really grateful.
Thank you so much, Maria. Great to see you.
I will let you know one more thing. We are, I'm also doing the senior citizen, the senior, we're doing breakfast for them. We're sending breakfast every day. And then they sort of sell it to the, I don't know quite what they're doing, but the kids they can go through, the seniors can go through and get a nice hot breakfast. So.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you. Again, thanks for all your support, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item of new business is appointing a representative to Walpole Media. So, Mr. Brian D'Necio is being renominated as the School Committee Representative to Walpole Media, which is a nonprofit corporation and provides the town local programming, government and school committee meetings. The mission of Walpole Media is to give local residents, students and people who live, work or go to school in Walpole, the resources they need to express their opinions, share their talents or communicate an idea. Mr. D'Necio is currently watching my children. He's not present tonight, but I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to reappoint Mr. Brian D'Necio. We're glad to have his help in this way.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mrs. Gaetz. I saw those in favor. Opposed, abstained. 6-0-0.
We're sure he'll carry out all of our requests.
But I'm looking forward to serving with him, since I was just appointed last week.
Oh, that's excellent.
By the Select Board.
Oh, good, Kristen.
This is great. So we're going to get a ton of money from them this year, huh?
Exactly.
Shake them down. This is great.
Okay. Next item of business. Yes, Dr. Goff, your turn. Superintendent report.
So Dr. Han and I continue to go out to the schools. What's nice, Dr. Han spends a lot of his focus on getting into the classrooms of our first-year staff. He meets with them through new teacher training once a month as well. It would spend the week of the open houses, past couple of weeks. So last week, I was able to get to the open houses at Boyd in, Byrd and Johnson. This week was Elm and OPR. And then next week, we, we finish off with, with Fisher Elementary. Last Friday, Dr. Han and I had Walk With the Supers. Well, we had good weather, so hopefully we can pick another date in, in October. I've also been meeting this week individually with principals to discuss their goals for the year. And this will continue into next week as well. And Dr. Han continues to have curriculum cluster meetings, both with the middle and the high school liaisons. I've also been trying to get out in the afternoons, get some fresh air and see some athletic events. That cross-country and the football game against Wellesley, that was a nice win. And next week, I've got soccer and volleyball on my schedule, so if I can get to them. Please be, just as a reminder, that the Fails, Leeds, Rogers and Cooney Scholarship applications are available through the month of October, the entire month of October. The application is found on the district website, or you can come to the superintendent's office and see Mary Mortally. And as a reminder, to be eligible, the students must be a graduates of Walpole High School. And these awards shall be to undergraduates at four-year accredited colleges, and they'll be eligible for scholarships each of their four years. Also in your packets is the Walpole Public School Improvement Plans. As you note, everything, you'll see, everything's in one document. So there's consistency in terms of the expectations and the formatting across all of the schools. So you'll see an introduction, the district-wide goals. So you'll see how that aligns with our school, how the school improvement plan aligns with our strategic plan. And you'll, and then it's also followed by school levels. And within the levels of multiple schools, you'll see some commonalities. For example, in, in elementary school, you'll see curriculum and instruction. But also note that, I want to point out with the anticipated opening of the combined middle schools, those two school improvement plans are identical. So we can create some consistency and some communication. And you'll see some common highlights in that section as well. The template was developed probably two years ago by Dr. Anne Vera Cruz. I always have to thank her in assisting us in developing it. I think she's currently the Director of Curriculum Innovation and Student Achievement at Brown University. And she did some of her internship with me at Byrd years ago. So, I hope she is well. Most importantly, I want to thank the teachers, the parents, the principals and the community members who dedicate their, their time to be on these school councils. It's really important. So I know there's a lot of readings, so feel free to email me with any questions about the plans. And I'll get them to the principals and those on, the members on school councils as well. Just quickly, since I mentioned the, how the school improvement plan aligns with our district strategic plan, I'm excited to let everybody know that, you know, we're, we're ending this piece and start ending our phase of the five-year, and we'll be starting a new cycle in, end of January, early February. So we're modeling after what's called the Planning for Success. That's a model that was developed from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it really serves as a roadmap for improvement over a three-to-five-year period. And it includes approximately six sessions, three hours per session. And it really will take place over a two-month period to ensure that we get input from stakeholders, that it's inclusive, it's comprehensive, there's a format for that. And we're looking for the first session is scheduled January 25th. But as we get closer, I'll give you more information about that. The Healy, the school administration recently announced that they awarded grants to 31 high schools to plan new innovation career pathway programs. And Walpole High School was a recipient of that $25,000 grant. And so they're able to use the funds to develop and map out curriculum, pursue partnerships with local businesses and higher education institutions, and explore maybe some possibility, some project opportunities. So it's not just the work-study program. We look at our STEM Academy and looking at some other ways that we can branch those out to healthcare, environmental life science. What's nice about this is that this grant enables us to apply for another larger grant. I think Steven Imbush was saying the, the other day that it's up for $100,000. And if you get that, you get that for five, for five years. So, stay tuned for that. And again, like I just mentioned with Maria, I think it's important to note that the number of grants that staff, you know, apply for, it is not easy. It is a, you know, really complex process that takes a lot, a lot of time and energy to apply for these grants and to then submit. And you have to submit your documentation of how you're, how you're spending these grants. But we've done, you know, through Tom's cybersecurity, Mike's, you know, $140,000 for the access controls that helped out with, with capital funding. We consistently, I think, business department the other year for curriculum. So, you know, I have to give kudos. I mean, it, it's a lot that wouldn't be funded. You know, it's not funded through the operating budget that we're able to get. And then finally, this week, we're thrilled to share the news that in terms of MCAS, Walpole High School has been recognized as a school of recognition by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So at a total of 1,830 schools in Massachusetts, Walpole High School was among only 66 schools, only 18 high schools that received this recognition. Our students have demonstrated what they consider high achievement or strong growth under the state's accountability system, which also takes account MCAS scores, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates. And so this, this achievement is really a direct result of the hard work of our, our students, our teachers, our staff. And we're grateful for the support of our families and the entire Walpole community. Next month, Dr. Han will present MCAS Information for School Committee. And we also have some new MCAS tests coming down the pike in terms of history and a pilot for STE. But I won't ruin all the good stuff. And that's it.
There's actually quite a lot of great stuff in that report. Any questions or comments for Dr. Goff?
Great enthusiasm from your.
Oh, right.
Great things going.
Close to the top.
We're going. It's hard to believe it's the end of September.
It's amazing.
All right. Onto old business, middle school building project update, since Mr. Breen is not with us tonight.
Yeah, I can, I can mention a couple of things. We're starting our bi-weekly transition meetings beginning October 12th. So it'll be opposite of our high school meeting. So Thursday will be a very popular afternoon for me. So that will focus primarily on the move and the overall transition to the new building. We want to do this sooner rather than later. So we're having, having those meetings. We're having FFNE, which is our furniture and equipment. having FFNE, which is our furniture and equipment meetings, and that's going on as well. Century Drywall is moving along, and they're expected to do a floor per week, per area, which is exciting, and the masons continuing to put her work around, do some work around the building. They're going to install some electrical panels, and the window and curtain frame is still, there's, they're still ongoing. I believe there's some skeleton crews that are working on Saturday as well. So moving along.
Anybody any comments or anything to add on middle school? Okay, on to the high school renovation project update. Mrs. Syrek?
So we met last week. It was a pretty quick meeting, kind of a reset after the summer, confirmed budget, how HVAC is included or not, reviewed the schedule. Design development will start in November, so that's probably the next big thing that will start. And then we also talked a little bit about a community outreach plan. We still have some time. I think the next thing that people will see is potentially, maybe Tom and I will work on updates to a website, so we'll have a, a better way to share more consistently. So those are kind of the updates. And then our next meeting is October 19th, so after the high school starts, we'll start to have a more regular cadence.
Yeah, and I think with that, too, it's, it's part of that is, you know, how we schedule these public meetings to get the information out. And as Kristin mentioned, like really the why behind the renovation and also what these, what these sketches look like, because the why is important to, for the community.
Questions or comments about that?
I think that, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Sharing the picture, like the plans and pictures is so great and impactful and like that people can envision some of these changes, because I had the opportunity to go through the high school recently. I haven't spent a lot of time there, my kids aren't there yet. And I was looking, I was trying to think back to the images I had seen before of plans that are going to happen. I think it was so helpful to visualize what might happen. And I know just when we can get those out to people, it'll be great.
Definitely. Absolutely. Okay. Subcommittee activity. We did have a superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting. Mrs. Gallivan or Mr. Buckley, anything you want to say about that, or Dr. Goff?
It was just basically to, you know, to begin the year on the right foot in terms of understanding what goals are, and we're talking about a two-year evaluation cycle. And exactly the nuts and bolts of how that will work out is still to be determined. But I think we were glad to get our first meeting on the calendar in September because it's just a fair way to, to approach, you know, any, any conversation that we wanted to have.
And as a result of that, I'll be able to share my goals with you the next meeting.
Yeah.
In your packets. And I believe we have a curriculum subcommittee meeting next week.
Tuesday. Any citizens' comments this evening? Okay, none. So we will move on to approval of warrants, donations, and minutes. Mrs. Rogers, would you like to take the warrants?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. Payroll 2407 PS and payroll 2409 PS.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Six, zero, zero.
Next being a motion to approve accounts payable under the warrant number 224011, under the same warrant. Should I list all of the different ones under the same warrant?
Just by number is fine.
Okay. So 224011, 224012, and that's it. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Six, zero, zero. On to the gifts.
I will take those. To Elm Streets, I'd make a motion to approve the following gifts to Elm Street School, Fisher School, and Old Post Road from Bay State Textiles for $637. To Boyd and Elm Fisher, Old Post, Byrd, Johnson, and the high school from the Junior Women's Club of Walpole and School Health Office donation in the amount of $700. To Elm Street School from Shutterfly for $762. Walpole High School from the Michael Faulkner gift account for $250. And Systemwide from School Gardens for $248.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Syrek, second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Six, zero, zero. And finally, the approval of minutes.
Thirteenth, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the September 14th, 2023 school committee meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Gayotz. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Five, zero, one.
Thirteenth, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the September 14th, 2023 school committee executive session meeting minutes with the correction that Mr. Buckley was present as I did speak with you via telephone. That is permissible under the augmented open meeting law.
Second. Okay, so the motion is to accept the executive session meetings with that addition of Mr. Buckley being present as he was by telephone, motion by Mr. Buckley, and second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Six, zero, zero. Mark's not here, I guess we're here all night. What do you do?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Six, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.